Okay, it's close enough, ten seconds. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you have the agenda in front of you, is there any question on the agenda or is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? A motion made second to approve the agenda, and second, any questions? If not, are there all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comment, anyone who wish to address to council, and I talked to Tim Lynch the other night at Bowling Bankland, and he said he'd like a few minutes to talk to the council, so.
If I could, thank you. I'll make it.
You gotta turn it on, turn it on, Tim.
There we go. It actually sounds better when it's off, but anyway, I just wanted to start and just say thanks for the opportunity, I, like I said, I met Mayor Thomas and he invited me over, and I just wanna, we have to concentrate on, we're gonna have a little pain this summer, but we're gonna have to have a little pain this summer to go through the long-term construction projects. The one I'd like to comment on right now, the one, the new bridge in Water Town is going on schedule. If you're ever gonna find a time to build a new bridge, and you couldn't have a better winter or better spring, to do it with the unreasonably low water, and barring some major storm like we have the previous two years with the high water, Marcus traditionally in the spring, but it's been in June and July, everything should go very well there. In June, there'll be the next traffic change, and that'll be going to the north part, the old bridge will be taken down, and actually, traffic will be on the north part of the new bridge, so, that's going very well. We just opened our bids on Highway 10 from Highway 7 down to County Road 30, that's a total reconstruction this summer, and that'll be with wide paved shoulders, and that came in actually a million and a half under the engineer's estimate, the engineer's estimate was 7.1, came in like 5.6, so we're very happy about that, and again, that'll be a total reconstruction, and both of these will be, the construction will be done in 2015, and just odds and ends finished up in 16. There is one that's a little bit close here, but it's a little, on Leopard's Lake, Leopard's Lake, Leopard's Lake, straight north of town, on the east, the northeast corner, there's a low spot, where there's, it's actually low for about 200 yards, so we're actually going to raise that road several feet there, because there are two residences that are cut off from emergency services, so that's either gonna be in 15 or 16, depending on exactly how it all breaks out, but it's gonna be a lot of fun, we did 20, did a Millan Overland 23 last year, so that hopefully we'll take a little bit more traffic this year, because, you got any projects in town?
Oh yeah, maybe one.
Maybe one.
With that, I just had, just wanted to stop by and say hi, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions anyone might have, otherwise I, the mayor was very adamant I stayed at two minutes.
You have to report it to. Funny.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes, Luann.
Do you know what the time is, the timeline for the detour's gonna be for County Road 10?
I think, early start is early June all the way through October.
June through October?
Correct.
Does that detour come to Mayor then, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And ours is May 18th through, it'll, it should be open before the 4th of July on the roundabout, so we're gonna have a little bit of overlap in June, where we're gonna have a lot of local traffic, a lot of traffic on this, on Blue Jay Avenue, so.
Wonderful, at least, at least it's only a month, but they're gonna start out in north and then work to the south in segments, it'll be a total closure, total reconstruction, and they'll be softening the corners, and again, the wide paved shoulders, so, and that's the only part in Carver County that Highway 10 doesn't have the wide paved shoulders, so, we'll get that done. And then, obviously, the city of Waconia, they're have redoing Highway 5, so, might be a nice summer to go on vacation for a week or two.
Yeah, the reason I talked to Tim is I'd read about him and he, Jim, actually him trying to rein in the Met Council, then I said, "More power to you," so, whatever you do, that's, that is, would be very helpful.
I appreciate that, I think they're getting pretty insulated from the common people, and they need to be reined back in, and we're trying to do the best we possibly can there, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, the consent agenda, we have 4.1 approval of the minutes of the April 13th, 2015 regular council meeting, 4.2 approval of minutes of the March 10th, 2015 park board meeting, and 4.3 additional claims for the month of April, any of those need to be pulled up for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Hold second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all, any further questions? Not all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, staff reports, public works.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have the public works, staff report in front of you, Kyle is also in attendance for the audience, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about his activities from March 19th through April 23rd.
The street light down at the end of our cul-de-sac, kinda like on Jeff Olmert's property, that thing doesn't seem to work, it just turns on and off all the time.
Just let us know, and we'll, we need address, and we'll call it in.
I'm not sure if you know his address, but.
It's Jeff, it's on his property?
It's right next to his property, it's your, I think it's probably the only one down there, closest to Jeff's, but it's, some up around the sensors.
On Hanoff, you said?
Yeah.
I guess this falls under public works, is there, where's your, Kyle, back, Fifth Street, there's a bunch of pottles, is that kind of part of our plan to pass this summer, or what's?
Down by Blue Jay High?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, I notice those two, yeah, I'll have them on, when I do the, around the manhole and stuff in the rest of the city, then I'll have them near, wherever we get them at.
Okay. Anything else for Kyle? Okay, if not going on, city engineer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Dave Martini is not in attendance at the meeting tonight, but his staff report is before you, if you have any questions, I would be happy to take those and get answers for you.
Did people attend the?
We had four people attend the open house, and two of them, one, two of them are from the city council.
I was one of them, so.
And you were with the other one.
Okay, okay, moving on, then to the sheriff's department, any report there, none? Okay, and state administration.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you do have my report before you, I also have been attached to my report the quarterly financial statements for the water and sewer, and I will have quarterly financials for you, or year-to-date financials for you in May for the general fund and the revenues and the expenditures. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about my report, or the information in front of you.
On that wetland project?
Yes.
Do we still have the $50,000?
We do through this year, but we're waiting to hear from Joel Vinklmeyer, whether he wants to move forward with it, because the cost share, or the amount of money that the city's gonna gain from it has gone down considerably, so, we're waiting to hear from Joel.
Just to bring you up to date, Joel called me last week, and he wanted to meet with me and wanted, as you, to quote him, get me in the pickup and show him, show me around a little bit, so when he gets around to that, I'm, listen, see what he has to say, but, nothing, no progress as far as either which way.
And there's no other way to move forward with that project without that property?
No, but we, but we, city engineer and I did meet with Carver County, there's no additional funding from the Weiner Committee, but there may be some additional funding that they would be able to do with some of the restoration that we have to do, because that's what pushed the project over. Because of the Bowser requirements, the reseeding and the ongoing maintenance is now at $90,000 for the five years, so that's what skewed the whole project, that it's cost more than we thought it was gonna cost. The county may be able to help us with some of that, through, either through their public works or through their wetland restoration, so we just have to wait till we hear from Joel, once we hear from Joel, then we'll set up a meeting with Lyndon Robgen, the public works director, to find out what they can do, if there's something they can help us with on that restoration.
So what has he been presented with now that was different? Less money?
No, he's, yeah, he's making a little bit less money, but we are $35,000 in the hole, and he's 80 something to the good.
Yeah.
It used to be a good, it used to be a good deal for him, and a pretty good deal for the city, but now it's no longer a good deal for the city, but it's still a pretty good deal for him, so.
So what's he deciding?
He needs to decide whether he, what he would wanna sell us the easement for, or sell us the land for, or, he needs to, maybe, we, that was what we said to him, and then we also said to him, or he needs to come up with, pay some of the expenses on it, so, and I can get you that spreadsheet, if you'd like to see it, that Dave did on, that shows that difference. But because, we didn't realize this was gonna happen until Bowser requirements came in on if we wanna get 75% of the credits for that, which the credits were what was important in order to be able to make a cash flow, but now those requirements to get those 75% require, or to get that 75%, the requirements are so great on the reseeding and the killing, and it's $90,000, and we didn't think it would be that much, yeah.
And that's just for that portion of it?
Well, it's for the whole wetland, in order to bring it back.
For the whole project.
And to keep it, because there's so many invasive species, in order to keep it, to get the credit, we don't get the credit for, the full credit for almost five years, we get a little bit the first year, a little bit the second year, and so, it's that ongoing maintenance, in order to get the full credit, that's what's costing us. We have the other option is to go out and bid with another company on the restoration too, which we could do too, but.
But we have deemed that it's a necessary project.
It's a necessary project for the stormwater, we wanted, we wanted, the city wanted to just dig a hole, and the county said, "No, no, no, you're gonna do a wetland, we'd rather you do a wetland project." And so now here we are, because of the rules with Bowser, and staff have changed, and they interpret the rules a little bit differently, and the Army Corps also, we had some issues with that, where it was okay at first, and now it's not okay, we gotta do some changes to the ponds that's adjacent to it, and so, it's just been an ongoing project. That, when we went back to the Weiner Committee to ask for an extension, the engineer from the city of Chaska said, "If you're working with Bowser, I just, I fully understand, and more power to you, and absolutely will extend this," which he's done it himself.
I think we need to try to get Vinklmeyer in here sooner than later.
I agree, and he, he contacted me this week, he said it depends on whether, he's doing fieldwork, that's the problem, and he did not give any indication which he was leaning, he just wanted to talk to me about it, which I'm willing to do, but, I'm not sure it's gonna change anything, to be quite honest, but, I don't know, it's why it's just say no, so.
Right.
So anyhow, as soon as we hear something, hopefully by next meeting, we'd have something, and he would be in touch with me. Okay, anything else for Luann on any of those things?
The only thing, I don't know when is the right time to talk about, but now if you're hearing about County Road 10 detour, I'm just really nervous about this road having so much traffic on it, and the fact that, you know, we come over to this park a lot with just getting across this road, I'm just super nervous about how much people, 'cause I, you know, I get scared on this road, now it's gonna be this road, and is it hosted? And I feel a lot of people drive super fast down Main Street, like, that was, you know, I wanna discuss a little bit of that, 'cause I just, I think people are going faster than 30, unless I'm just thinking cars are not, I mean, I have no idea.
No, they are.
But I mean, I mean even semi trucks are flying through here, who aren't, you aren't stopping, and, you know, I'm, can't, like, I'm holding their bikes, trying to make sure that they don't cross over.
The one comfort thing is the, the roundabout slowing down coming from the north after this.
Yeah, that will be nice.
That was slowing down coming from the north, that's slowing down coming from the south.
So I don't know if, you know, we can get some big light ups, I don't know, just something for when we have that extra traffic, I mean.
Road, we slide, and that speed trailer, and I suppose we do, most likely, just give some direction to the town cop, to use master patrol out there, maybe some enforcement that's made.
I've already talked to Jake about that.
Yeah, I mean, and even, hopefully now with the roundabout, it will slow people coming through, but, I mean, I've seen semi trucks probably going 40, and I just, I just think that's just too fast.
40 starts way out there.
Yeah.
At the town road, so.
I just thought I, I don't know when that appropriate time to talk, I don't know.
Well, is there anything that the county could do as far as even some of the LED outline signs to warn people more that there are speeds zones coming?
I can check it.
And maybe even know with the, with that detour coming, is that detour gonna be coming down Blue Jay here then?
Yeah.
Does the county just buy a couple of those, the LED flashes and the little big signs?
Construction signs?
Yeah.
And there should be, is there actually somebody put up a Zion too for the, because that's gonna be a, a lot of traffic passed during the detour, they should be putting some signs up there for some warning signs.
For just a little bit of time, when school out?
Uh, I think school's out about May 22nd.
Four days, that'll be four days, so maybe you wanna have Jake, for sure, be sitting there during school hours.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, even some.
I'll talk to him tomorrow and see what we can come up with, if we can come up with a little bit of a plan, and then maybe we can get something written up, and either emailed out to all of you, or on the next, it'll be in your package for the next meeting, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I just think it's something we have to address, yeah.
I think even some evening traffic control, you know, later, and he, what time's he get off, Jake?
3:30 in the afternoon if he works day shift, but I think, I think he's been called in a few times in the middle of the night too, for some different things that have happened in the county, so.
I guess I'd like to see him pull that other area car, you know, a few times a week, just because it is a detour, and the traffic is gonna go through here to get to Water Town, or.
Oh, particular detours, the schools on that detour won't be done by September, will it, no?
Yes.
Is it gonna be done?
By July 4th.
No, but.
This one, though that one?
Yeah.
No, you said October.
Yeah, so it's still gonna be a lot of traffic come past here September, October.
Yeah, well, but it should go on Highway 25 by then.
Yeah, but then even then, having, we have to address that with the extra flow of traffic, making sure that coming this way, people know that it's only 30 through a town, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they won't be able to get up to speed after the roundabout here, but coming this way.
So do you know those signs that they have where they say 30, and then the thing will come on, and it'll flash, and it'll tell you, "You're doing 35," they're about, I think they're about between $5,000 and $8,000, and I think that the city could purchase one if they wanted to, to put up, I can get a price on them, bring it back to the council meeting, so that's something you think it would be useful for us to have to put on the roads at other times, but again, it's county road and state road, so, and Jake and I have talked about that, whether it would be a good idea to have, I don't know if the county, the city wants to purchase, so.
Does the county charge you to bring the speed trailer in?
No, no.
I'd get that out.
It's the way to go.
I think if we just retrain some people, the old problem with speed trailer gets put away at 3:30 in the afternoon, unless they can get the CSO to do it if they're, if they're available to, because it's gotta be put away every night, and the public works is the one that ends up being responsible for it, so then it's not here in the evening, so.
And that's when you're gonna have the most traffic, yeah.
People coming up to use the ballpark.
Well, why don't you talk tomorrow and bring back some thoughts, maybe?
Yeah.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, anything else? State administration, okay, moving on, 6.1, Todd Hagan, bond sale pre-approval resolution 4271516.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the city plans to issue bonds to finance the school's portion of the roundabout and the water tower rehabilitation. The summary of the projects with the identified funding is attached, including the estimated special assessments to the benefited property. The city's financial advisor, Ayers Incorporated, uses this information to prepare the necessary documents to sell the bond. Based on the review, it is recommended the city sell 620,000 of general obligation bonds, 430,000 for the roundabout project, and 190 for the water tower rehabilitation project. Ayers' pre-sale reports and schedules are attached, staff will recommend to adopt the resolution, and Todd is also here tonight to answer any of your questions that may have.
Great, thank you Luann, Mayor, council members, Todd Hagan from Ayers and Associates, like Luann had said, you have the pre-sale report in front of you, I think I was here last, we did a refinancing, so saved us some money on an older bond issue, rates are still really low right now, so it's a good time to, you know, if you need to borrow, it's a good time to do that also, so, we package up the bond issue, there's two authorities here, of course, the roundabout and the water tower, we're kinda putting those both into one bond issue to save you, you know, some money there, not to have two separate bond issues, so we put them into one, two purposes, so it's easy to track on the utility portion and the assessment portion for the city. It's a 10-year bond, so it's gonna mature relatively quick, we'll have a nine-year call or eight-year call provision on this to be able to prepay at that, at that time. You do have a double A credit rating with Standard and Poor's, this is relatively speaking a pretty small bond issue, it's very short, so we don't feel that the cost outweighs the, or the benefit will outweigh the cost on obtaining a credit rating, so we're looking at selling this non-rated out into the market, we're also gonna solicit this or assist the city in obtaining bids from, if there's local banks in the area that are interested, sometimes they like the 10-year bonds out there, so it's short enough, I think, that we might attract a couple banks too, and that would be nice, to have some local participation in that as well. I think we've used your bond attorney, is Briggs and Morgan out of St. Paul, a trustee wanna use them again in bond trust services as the pain agent, that's a subsidiary, Ayers, and we're the folks that would invoice the city for the bond, bond payments as well, so we, through input from, of course, the engineer, through Luann, and the timing of the bond issue, this is what, this is what we came up with, so, my plan is to come back on May 26th and present the council with the bids, and we'll put the best one on the top, and then you'll have a resolution that's prepared by the bond attorney too for action at that, at that time. So, at this point, there's a resolution that sets forth, Ayers and Associates, our company, to package this up and assist the city in obtaining those bids for that, for that May 26th date. So, again, do you have any questions, I'm here for questions as well, so.
Is the cost of that mixer in this 190?
Yes, it is.
How does, how does Blue Jay High's portion come out of this, or, I mean, how does it come out?
The city bonds court, we keep the portion, we keep the money here, and then they will get assessed for it and repay the city twice a year, I checked on that because it's over $100, so they'll get a tax statement, and they have to pay their assessment, and then we use that money to pay back the bond.
Okay.
So, the money, we keep the cash to pay for the project.
Yeah, so there's no tax levy here, it's special assessments and water rates and charges, yeah.
And they've, they've already signed off on that, right?
Yes, they have, yes, they have. In fact, I've been in touch with them to be sure that they wanted to do a 10-year, you know, 10-year bond or 10-year assessment, I've been in contact with Joel, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so then if not, then a motion would be in order to approve this resolution 4271516.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to approve this resolution, any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need the original resolution, or can I send it email? Okay, come on.
Okay, moving on, 6.2, approval to give Broadband LLC notice.
Mr. Mayor, council members, at the April 13th council meeting, the city council had passed an agreement to allow Broadband to deposit with the city a more manageable escrow for the rehabilitation of the water tower. Broadband LLC representative Anthony Wells stated that they would not be escrowing any funds with the city, and they would like the city to give them their 30-day notice. City staff is requesting authorization from the city council to give Broadband LLC their 30-day notice to remove all equipment from the city and mayor's water tower. The effective date that they would have to remove all the equipment would be Thursday, May 28, 2015, and that's giving them a little bit more than 30 days.
So have you had any correspondence with him?
No, I, I corresponded with him and let him know that I was gonna be putting it on the council agenda to get the 30-day notice, and he said, "Sounds good," let me know what the date is, all that from him.
So they're not interested in finding another site in town, or?
They didn't communicate that to me.
Why wouldn't they try and get the tower on this, you know, this tower out here?
I don't know if Verizon would let them, it would be a lot more than, they'd be paying them probably a lot more than $60 a month to be on that site.
That's probably true, yeah. Okay, I, okay, is there a motion to approve this council action?
I'll make that motion to give Broadband LLC notice.
Is there a second?
Hold second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the notice, the determination of this for Broadband LLC, any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, approval of RFP and a veritism for bids for garbage services, refuse services.
Mr. Mayor, council members, at the April 13th, 2015 council meeting, the council decided to solicit RFPs for sanitation services for the residents of Mayor. Staff is proposing the city use the attached RFP and set a deadline date for submission of Thursday, May 21st, 2015. Council will also need to decide the terms of the contract, the completed RFP will present at the Tuesday, May 26th city council meeting, so after council review, a motion authorizing the advertisement and the RFP that is attached for garbage removal services. So what is, a couple of things in here is the year of the contract, the number of years, the period, the time period, how long do you want it to be for, do you want it for one year, do you want it for three years, do you want it for five, or do you want it for one with the option to be able to renew, that needs to be in here, and then I also included, you know, the garbage can, the sizes, asked for references, asked if they were licensed, how many years have they been in business, and then, also, they needed to add an annual cost for curbside citywide cleanup, disposal of fluorescent bulbs, and disposal of batteries, because currently that, we do do that with waste management. I don't know if there's anything else in here that you wanted, the city hall, fire station, and wastewater plant are to have pickup with no fee attached to it, I don't, so, and the city celebration also, so I think everything's pretty much so covered, the mayor has reviewed it, I don't, I don't know if there's anything else you want changed in, I guess that's what I'm asking, and then I do need to know the term of the contract that you're going to put in the RFP.
I guess my thought on the term of contract, I'd like to see it's get either a three or five-year contract, I mean, a one-year doesn't make sense, and they can't give you a good rate if they're gonna be redoing this in a year's time, so I'd like to see it's both a three and a five-year, that we, they know they're gonna have it for a certain, for a defined number of years.
So the term of the refuse collection contract shall be for a period of three to five years?
Either three to five, or three or five, I'm not sure which, what you think.
So you want RFP, or a bid for both?
I'd, or just, or just one, I guess I'm content just one five-year bid, as far as that's concerned too, and then, that's, it's a council, I haven't been close to this to get into three years, so.
So, but then you renew it every year, right?
Correct, and you have, you have outlets that you can get out of the contract.
Yeah, there are outlets where service is not.
Right.
What you're asking them to do, because I would imagine that there, if, if a new con, new hauler comes in, they're gonna have to buy all new carts, that all has to factor into what the cost of the garbage removal is, so if you only do three years, they can only put their carts out for three years, that cost, but if you do five, they can put it out for five, so, they, the rates would be, the rates will be dependent upon if it's three or five, and that's fine, will influence it, let's put it that way, will influence the rate.
Yeah, or you're just gonna go the five-year rate, that's a five-year, that's fine, okay.
Okay.
So, or settle on a, on a five-year contract, or anything else, what else did you?
I think that was it, and as long as all the other things, the citywide celebration and the free pickup, and the items that are on the list are the things that you want, I mean, do we want?
I mean, do we wanna add electronics? Because I don't think I had electronics, or do we want people just to find ways to get, to be able to recycle those themselves, which they can at the Kugler site? I mean, and you're only asking, like, for the, the oversized items, too? That's, that's what people call and want that stuff picked up, so.
Well, I think it looks good.
I think it's fine the way it is. Okay, so then we need a motion to approve the RFP with the addition of the, the five-year contract. Make a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the RFP with the five-year contract stipulation. Any further discussion or questions?
I, do you wanna advertise this in the newspaper also? Or do you want me to just send it to the list of garbage haulers I have? Or do you want me, and to put it on the website? I mean, I'll put it on the website. I have, it's Elite, it's Randy Sanitation, Waste Management, BFI, I think Allied Services, if it's still, or Allied something, if it's still in business, those five garbage haulers that I know of, that I can send the RFP to.
Mumford? Or don't they have the?
I don't know if that, if they exist anymore. Yeah, they can.
Because they pick up some businesses in town.
Okay.
The eastern.
Special bars.
Your business?
I think it's.
So I, just do that?
You mean, just add them, or do you wanna put it on, or advertise it?
You wanna put it a little?
Cost, I don't know.
I can put an ad in the, in the newspaper, too, if you want me to.
If I goes in a legal notice, they already charge R and L for that.
Since a legal notice, don't we have to post it?
I don't know.
An RFP?
I don't know. Luann would know.
Which do? Because you can solicit RFPs, I don't know that you have to advertise them.
Do what you think is best.
Okay, so, any, any other questions? So answer it.
I'll check and be sure, and if I need to put it in the paper, I'll put it in the paper.
Okay. Any further questions? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, six dot four, approval of construction of sand volleyball court.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the park board is recommending that the city council authorize Shawn Dalco to construct sand volleyball courts for the city. The courts would be constructed in the old schoolhouse park. The cost for the sand volley court is fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety, and additional costs are for the poles, nets, and installation of the poles. They total about eighteen hundred dollars. Total cost for the installation of the project would be sixteen thousand five hundred ninety. Park Board did budget for the sand volleyball court in the twenty fifteen budget, and it is in their capital improvement plan for twenty fifteen. A motion awarding the construction of the sand volleyball court to Dalco excavation in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety plus the poles, nets, and installation of the poles. The park board's gonna have to review this at the next meeting, maybe make a decision on where they're gonna come up with the additional funds for the, the poles, the nets, and the installation of the poles. But they did have fifteen thousand for the construction of the sand volleyball court. And I did provide that information to you on, with your, with the memo.
I think it was fourteen. No, it was fifteen. Oh, good. That makes it look better.
Did we get any other bids other than Dalcos?
No, I did not. The, the largest portion of his, his bid really is the, is the.
Material.
Mm-hmm.
When this is constructed, is there some sort of border edging around or event, grass going into it, to see, is controlled the intrusion of the grass?
He digs it down.
I think it's just maintenance.
He digs it down, and then he puts fabric underneath the bottom, which was an extra expense. And then they're gonna put so much rock that will, for drainage, and then the good sand on the top. And if you look at his quote, that's what costs the most, is all that hauling in the, the gravel and the sand that is, is almost ten thousand out. Six, seven, eight thousand two hundred of it, on the fourteen is, oh, wait, I'm adding that up wrong. I'm sorry. Thirty-five seventy-five and sixty-eight twenty-five is for just the hauling in of the gravel. So it is about ten thousand dollars, but the worth of it is just, just the gravel for all it is.
Did you want another, did you want to, or did you, or we just?
You know, I think it's good to get two or three quotes on all the work, when we do the work in the community, you know, to pass the work around.
Suggestions?
Uh, so one of them could be Henning's in Germany.
Henning.
Bruce?
No, I don't know if Burns would do it, or.
I'm not thinking, I know the boys are Ryan and, one of the boys, Dennis.
Henning?
Is it Dennis, no, not Dennis.
That's, that's the dad.
That's the dad.
David and Dennis, none of them are I.
David and Dennis, the owners.
Run up the more of that information to me, I'll get those, get some of the quotes, man.
Well, you should have Burns.
Yep. It's the David and Dennis one.
It's just Henning excavating.
Henning, Henning excavating. Henning, Henning excavating. I think if you look in, form what you're saying.
Well, I have three. I think that's a, getting three bids is, is you're good.
Yeah, that should give a good handle on it.
Again, we, they already know what, I mean, now it's public what Dalco did.
Then I'll bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay, and we'll move on to, wait for the bids coming in at that. Six dot five, approval of additional compensation to Mayor Moxie organizer.
The mayor of Park Board has had a request for additional compensation for the facility, facilitator of the Mayor Moxie Four, Jill Hahn. The Mayor Moxie Four program has been very successful this year with fifty-five participants. The city has collected fees totaling three thousand six hundred and eighty-five, plus another forty dollars that is not reflected in this. The agreed-upon fee to be paid to Jill Hahn to facilitate the program was twelve hundred dollars. And when the park board began discussions about the program, the thought was that the program needed twenty-two participants to break even, and they based the number on the historical information from the last three Moxie programs. They established Jill's fee based on the minimum number of participants that they thought they would attend. That's how they came up with the twelve hundred dollars. So since the program has such a, a great success with the fifty-five participants, which has required that Jill had more work to do, additional work beyond what she originally anticipated, the park board would like to compensate Jill for her additional time and effort that she's put into the program. Park Board is recommending that six hundred dollars in additional compensation be given to Jill Hahn. So a motion authorizing an additional six hundred dollars to be paid to Jill for the Mayor Moxie Four program. And we have the funds from the participant fee, so motion to do, to pay her the additional money would be in order.
Okay, any questions? Is, probably explained, or is there a motion to approve this? Let me discuss it further.
So moved.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, motion made second to approve this additional compensation. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, six dot six, approval of purchase of mixer for the water tower. Kyle?
All right. Mr. Mayor and council members, staff is proposing the purchase and installation of a solar BTS twelve, one hundred twenty-volt electric mixer in the city's water tower after the reconditioning process is complete. The installation cost of the mixer and control box is about fifteen thousand dollars, with an additional, additional thirty-two hundred for new conduit and wire. So the overall cost of the project will be about eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Adding a mixing system to the city's water tower will be very beneficial overall. It'll allow city's water quality to remain at its highest when water demands fluctuate and the temperature changes. The constant circulation of the water will prevent scum from building up on the sides of the ball, and it'll also prevent ice from forming on the sides performing during the winter months. Currently, the interior coating of the city's water tower has been damaged due to the ice. Overall, the mixer will improve the lifespan of the tower's new coating, which will be, which will prevent costly repairs in the future.
And this cost was wrapped up into that bond?
Right. If you recall, in the, if you look in your minutes, it's a hundred and sixty-nine eighty-eight for the engineer and to do all the work on the water tower. It's an additional twenty, and we're asking, or eighteen, so that's a hundred and seventy-eight, and we're, we're asking for a hundred and ninety for the water.
How many gallons does it, do we go through in a day?
During the winter months, about one thirty on, a hundred thirty thousand on a day, and then during the summer months, closer to three hundred thousand.
So we're well over the fifteen percent exchange that they're talking about here?
Oh, yeah, for sure. This'll definitely help with ice, for sure. That's, that's the biggest benefit.
And you had an issue with it?
And we had it, we had an issue. Currently, in the winter, our water tower is basically, it's too big for what it's, or for what we have. So that, we should be using about two hundred thousand gallons a day during the winter, but we're currently about a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty thousand, so. I've seen these at all my expos and stuff that I've gone to for my water license and all that, and people, I, it's amazing what they do. It could be thirty below out in the water tower, but the mixers in it are clear as clear being, just perfect, so.
Well, it's save on chemicals or anything, or just?
It's good, they, with chlorine residual, it should help it, promote our water going stagnant. That's another big benefit of it. That's why the water quality will stay so much better. So, yeah, it'll definitely help water quality-wise.
And how long do they last?
Ah, I wanna say.
Was it a twenty-year kind of a?
It was like a twen, ten-year thing?
Only ten?
I wanna say, ten or twenty. I'm not sure what the actual warranty was. I can check.
What money for ten years?
Yeah, just a hundred. A hundred twenty volts, that's it. Yep, it's pretty simple. You just drop it in, plug it in, maintenance is just great on it. The, the control box will be at the base of the tower, so I'm sure it'll have, you know, if there's any alarm, if it's not running, if something's issue, then I'll alert you down at the bottom, base of the tower.
Okay, any other questions for Kyle? If not, is there a motion to approve this? And we can discuss it further, too.
Make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve the purchase of the mixer for the water tower. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Kyle. Okay, six dot seven, approval of waiver of late fees.
Mr. Mayor, council member, the resident at twenty-four fifty Deerwood Court has an extremely high water bill. City staff have been working with the resident to remember, remedy the amount due. Water bill appears to have excessive use involved, and staff consult the resident on several occasions about steps to take to try to investigate whether there's a water leak. Resident told staff in January that they were going to have a plumber investigate. He has called me since then to tell me that they have three toilets, and all three of the toilets, he thinks, were leaking. They replaced the flappers on them and took care of it. The other issue with this resident is they have had a major medical issue, and finances have been rather short. So the resident's requesting the waiver of the late fees, which amounts to six forty-six, sixty-five. They think that they can, would be able to catch up the utility bill much faster if the late fees were waived. A motion waiving the late fees for twenty-four fifty Deerwood Court in the amount of six forty-six, sixty-five, and that the resident enters into a payment arrangement for the balance to be paid within six months and the current monthly bill. He informed me that he thought he could have it taken care of in three months if we waived the late fees. So it's before you, I think, I guess I'm requesting that you waive the late fees, but again, it's your decision to make.
So we're not, we're not, we do see, I have the water usage that he actually uses. He's paying all this, or they are where we're.
Yeah, we're just asking, he's just asking to get rid of the, the late fees that have been added to the bill.
And for future of bills, technically?
I think that if he enters into a payment agreement and can do it within three months, that could be a decision that you would make. He was gonna pay three hundred dollars on the twentieth of April, but he's waiting for your decision to see would you decide on this, and then he'd pay two.
Wouldn't have put him under, or over.
Was that? The three is the.
Wouldn't have hurt him to pay the three hundred.
Well, I understand that.
He still would have owed.
Maybe he'd pay more. Maybe he can pay more if he could, but, but I think that if you would, if you'd wanna waive the late fees, and then waive the late fees on the past two months and the next three months, as long as he pays the current bill and enters into a payment agreement to have it paid within three months would be reasonable. But if he doesn't, then the, the late fees get rid later, he'll be right back where he was, so.
So do we have an actual request from him?
It's a verbal request. From his wife, and he didn't come, no.
So what exactly have we done on our end? Because when I'm looking at this, it starts in August of twenty fourteen.
But I think they paid at times.
One payment.
And I think I've sent letters, and then he comes in and tells me he can't pay, and then he'll pay, and then he doesn't come in and pay, because he's going to.
How did this not get put on the delinquent?
Because it probably wasn't, it was September's bill, which would have been October, that it would have been paid, and it would have been then November before. It was probably after we did the assessment. Because when you see it on the side, that's the month's usage. The numbers on the side type, so when it says September, then he billed for that bill in October to, but it's not due till November. So that's why it didn't get assessed tax, probably.
I'd feel a lot better about this if they would have had, made some attempt in the last, how many months are we again? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven months, to pay it or to fix it. If it would be me, first of all, I'd get charged the late fees, and I'd have to pay them, because that's the way it works, right? And I would have called the plumbers the next month. I wouldn't have had, I wouldn't have looked.
Is this a couple, or is this?
I, I think he's remarried now, but I think the medical issue that he has, has affected part of his ability to be able to follow through on issues and to remember things. I'm, I'm not gonna say too much, because I really don't think it's appropriate for me, too.
Have we ever waived such a high, you know, before?
No. I've worked with other people, though, at times where, when they've had late fees, and will agree to get caught up within a couple of months, and I'll waive the late fees and do that for them, too. I've done that in the past. In the past, I usually talk to the mayor about it, said, "What do you want me to do? I don't have a problem if they stay caught." But otherwise, if they don't, then it needs to be brought to the council.
I mean, can we do what you had mentioned, where it's the three months, but we'll waive them, but if he doesn't pay them in the three months, that those go back on?
Yes, yes, you could do that.
You know.
Is this six hundred and forty-six dollars for just what's owed today?
With late fees.
Late fees, as of today. So as we work with him for the next six months.
Well, he says he can have it caught up within three months.
He owes two thousand three hundred dollars.
There won't be, there won't be late fees attached to that, either. We're waiving them, too.
If you want to, yes.
So.
So sixteen thousand, uh, one thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-nine cents that's due.
I don't think it's right.
Without the late fees.
Everybody else has to pay the late fees.
See, some months it was twenty-one thousand gallons, twenty-three thousand, twenty-six, twenty-four.
That's why I would have called the plumber, right?
Yeah, that's.
Sixty, eighteen, fourteen, twelve. I mean, right.
It goes on for.
Months.
Months, and now we get it at council, now we're the bad guy, because.
Nobody's being the bad guy, they're just requesting it. He said it would help, and if, whatever.
Should we just put, could we just leave the late fees on till the end, and at the end of three months, if he's caught up, dismiss him at that point?
Is that what you'd like to do? Tell him that if he gets it caught up within three months?
Then the earnest, then the earnest is on him to, to get it paid in three months.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, and.
Instead of us going back later and saying, "Oh, no, you owe these," and it's become a civil matter, then you end up in court if they wanted to, I mean, what happens?
You just pass it to their taxes, is what you do. So if you wanna make the motion that you will waive the wait, late fees, if he. So if you wanna make the motion that you will waive the wait, late fees, if he keeps current and pays, pays what's past due, within three months. Otherwise the late fees stay. You could do something like that too.
I, I think it'd be more palatable to me to just, is you reverse the late fees at the end and on a set schedule.
Kind of get interest free.
Can you do that, Lois? Can, or somehow we can do it on the?
Well, how much is owed today just on water and sewer?
Yep.
And so that amount needs to be paid within three months, including each month.
Look, it's current.
And then if those amounts are paid, then we can get rid of the rest.
Yep. Yep, okay.
And if it doesn't happen?
Then the late fees stay.
And we're back here again and?
Well, then they stay and then, I suppose come, when it was November, then it goes on to taxes, so.
November.
That's it, I mean, then he would have until, you know, another three months or so to keep himself current and make sure he's.
As the water gets shut off.
Well, he did come and he did talk, even though, you know, whatever this medical issue is. So it's like, I mean, we don't know what that was. So I think this is a good, even though.
I, I can go with that.
We hold him accountable and then.
Yeah, just give him three months, get him paid up. If he's fine, then we can waive him at that point.
Okay, so then you want me to bring it back?
Yeah, bring it back then.
Uh, the problem we have is that we just, I know we're not, we don't seem to abide by some of our policies. I know we're not talking about water usage and sewer sanitaries, but here, I mean, I can remember a dozen times, maybe not that many times in my four or five years here now, that we're going through and, you know, waiving water fees, sanitary sewer fees and, and everything. And I mean, I guess if we're not gonna follow our policies, to maybe amend, I mean, we just went over this one, the last council meeting too. You know, maybe we go through, we take that out, that we're, you know, that, you know, they will not be done. I need to be a little more consistent on what our policies say.
Well, and this one differs a little bit from those, Eric, uh, those, um, most of those, we waived the sewer fee because the water didn't go to the plant.
Well, it says you will not. It says that we will not waive sanitary sewer fees. And I understand the reason for it, and I mean, I've approved pretty much every one of those, I imagine.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm just, it's, if we're gonna have policies and procedures, we need to make sure that we're following them. If we wanna continue to do that kinda thing, it just needs to come out.
We aren't waiving any of this, just waving the interest charge.
Yeah, and I know what I'm, just, yeah.
But I think there's special, I mean, we're a small town and the people do ca- I mean, I don't know.
See, that's why I need, that's why it needs to come out, cause it says you, adjustments not allowed sanitary sewer water. So I mean, maybe, maybe we should have brought it up back then, but I don't know, something to think about.
So is there a reason why we're waiving the penalties? And we aren't doing that for everybody?
He's asked, requested it.
He's, he's requested it, and there's, there's a medical.
For everybody that comes in and requests it, has a good.
No, I wouldn't say everybody. I, I think there's many circumstances that I would not agree with, but if someone has a major medical problem, um, I guess I'm gonna go in and work with them.
I wish they, you know, could have, I don't know if they can't not be here or not, I mean, you know, something a little more, a letter or something, you know, kinda what's going on. And they can, we show a little more investment in wanting to make this happen too, though.
Paying something in the last seven months. Did, um, how long have they lived there?
I don't know, as long as I can remember, it'd be years.
So long time, so this is a new?
And he's lo- I think he's lost his job.
So it's a current, um, they were fine up until twenty fourteen?
I, I've never really had a problem with him that I can recall, no. Not with water and sewer bills, no. And I, but that makes me feel a little better, like they just moved in and this is gonna be a pattern.
True.
And I, I get medical problems and not being able to go to work, believe me, I understand that.
Okay, so is that what we, now we need to have a motion that says we're gonna waive them, uh, we're, we're gonna wait three months, he needs to get paid up.
So we're gonna change this? Is that how that works?
Cause we're not waiving the fees yet.
No, we're not waiving the fees, we're gonna, we're gonna, he needs to make the effort to get everything paid up within three months. At that point, we will address it again.
I thought that's what Eric said. Is that what your motion was?
Yeah, basically to.
Okay, so I, I was, I just, the motion.
I didn't know you had made a motion, okay.
I didn't make a, I didn't make a motion, that's what I thought.
Did you?
Can we do this?
Oh, oh.
You wanna make a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion to waive them if he's paid up the past due and current months in three months. And then we will waive the late fees.
Okay, motions made second to require payment to be made within three months, uh, both the past due water amount and all current water bills. After all paid up in three months, then we will waive the late fees, is that right?
So he's not, he's still not gonna pay his late fees then? He'll pay up to, he'll pay the, let's just say it was today.
His current, yeah.
His current, he's gonna leave off the six forty-six.
Yep.
Even though the motion would dictate something differently.
You want him to pay them, then we'll refund them?
No, pay, pay us, cause.
Nope, I mean, what do you want us to do? Just pay the regular water charges.
The late water charges and the current water charges.
And then late fees will drop off. Will drop off if he gets current in three months. And if they don't, they'll just stay on his water bill and continue to increase and till then, you know.
Are they pretty confident they can do this in three months?
That's what they said.
Okay, any further question, discussion?
Or when do we, when do they get certified to tax it?
November.
Okay, any further questions, discussion?
So if it, if he goes one month without paying, do we get this back again, or what happens? What's possible?
Can you tell me? What do you want me to do? I'll wait till the end of the three months to see if he's paid it or not, if it's, if he's got it currently, he's paid everything. Unless you tell me different, would it, is that, that's the way I understand it.
No, I think that's fair, the earnest is on, you know, they go working with them, so where the earnest is, I'm gonna follow through with it.
Now it's on him.
That was the motion.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, um, death child sign, six dot eight.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, the city of Mayor implemented a death child area sign policy on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twelve for the residents at thirteen nineteen Evergreen Place. The policy states that the sign comes down in certain circumstances, which is section E, in cases where the impaired child moves from the immediate area. The family called to state that they will be moving on May sixth, twenty-fifteen. However, they informed staff that the new family moving in have a need for the sign. They have a death child also. So does the new family need to reapply for the sign and not pay the fee? Um, fee was for the sign. Part of the purpose to contact them would be to make sure they're aware of the policy and the requirements. So I'm requesting direction from you on what you want me to do. Do you want me to mail them an application and have them refill out an application with no fee?
Are they here already?
No, they'll be here after May sixth.
I would definitely reach out to them because we need the information. We need to know how old the child is and all the other stuff, but I wouldn't charge him again for the sign.
Can I have a motion then for that?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to contact them to get the information that we need, uh, but not to charge them for the sign. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, six dot nine, router discussion, Wi-Fi, that, uh, was a separate.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I apologize, somehow I, I omitted from getting this into your packets this week, so that was my error, so I apologize again. So the city has solicited, solicited three quotes for the installation of Wi-Fi and a more secure router at the community center. Comparison of costs may not be the only factor in deciding which quote to approve. So CB, CD, WG is using a Cisco, Cisco Meraki brand for the needs of the city. They're giving us option one, gives the possibility of wireless capability in council chambers and main offices. Um, the, the cost is fifteen twenty-seven with a recurring annual cost of one ninety-seven. Option two is a router that has dual function of wireless access point, and that one's one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight with a recurring annual cost of one forty-two thirty-four. Option three, this is really the only option that includes the router and wireless capability to the office and council chambers, but not necessarily the gym area. And that's one thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and a recurring annual cost of two hundred and eight, which makes it over two thousand dollars. System House has provided a quote of one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents with no recurring cost. This option creates security for the city computers and provides wireless access to the offices, council chambers, and to the gym. Tech Star has provided a quote of one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents, which I had to add the two together with no recurring cost. And this provides security for city computers and the wireless access to the office, council chambers, and the gym. After council discussion, the motion approving a company to complete the requested installations would be in order. So they've been here, they've looked at the facilities, all three of them, and these are the quotes that they've provided to the city in order to do the wireless and Wi-Fi for us.
What are the recurring costs, what are the costs?
Their licensing fees.
For?
For the Meraki, um, device.
Some, some of the routers are, you pay a licensing fee and then it, you know, make upgrades and, uh, you know, it involves some remote, um, access, maintenance and things like that. It's a, more than, more, it's more than a home router, it's almost.
And they're actually a three-year licensing agreement, and I took them and divided them by three. So on the, on the quote, you're gonna see it's gonna be more than what I quoted it as in my memo, but that's what, what I did. So they tried to, so that it could have annual cost.
I did, uh, I contacted, um, both System House and Tech Star, provided me some references. System House, I contacted the city of Buffalo Lake, and, um, they use them and they were very happy with their service. I, for Tech Star, I contacted city of Arlington, and likewise, they were born happy with their services, stuff, stuff too. So, nothing that, of any concern there, um, I don't, um, you know.
Are they both using commercial grade routers too, huh?
Yeah. I, I'm not quite, so am I from Tech Star or not? Okay, the router is you're proposing, that's, is that a commercial grade? Cause I guess my concern with initial com- initial talk with, with, I'm not sure who it was at Tech Star, was that we didn't need a router here. And that it, you know, from what I've read and I've done, you need a router after the, after Frontier's thing, because that's, Frontier's, it does not provide any security.
So actually the router is, um, as long as you don't have any holes in the firewall, so Frontier does provide a firewall slash router, wireless router. I would, I would argue that you could probably get away with not having that, um, but it's probably a best practice to have a router in place. The WatchGuard router that we did propose is a really high-end, incorporated router that can keep, run on strong walls, just goes on the bigger ones. However, it can be a lot more, uh, friendly, um, to smaller offices. So, um, just to, just to kind of throw it out there, we do have two over six, they have, and, uh, we just started probably about a year off pretty much the WatchGuards, just because it didn't expect us to go to five, all of that, a couple of thousand dollars. And we also did Meraki, uh, some issues with it ourselves, had a couple of bad experiences, and we just personally don't use it. But, um, it's probably very profitable, a lot of companies that do it still. The water plant has been rich, water plant has water.
They do, okay, okay.
Can I make another comment?
Sure.
Um, one thing that was, uh, I've worked with Anthony at, uh, Broadband, quite a few times, projects that we've done with the city office. And we're also a direct partner with Jaguar Communications, uh, you know, fiber through here. This year, we're actually, not we, but Jaguar is overlaying the city of Norwood, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, for the, you know, for the, um, residents. So if you are looking for an alternative option, and I know they're super, super backed up, but, um, I know there's a huge interest on there, and if you were to pursue it, overlay the city, there would be more options on the internet, so.
Oh, heavens, yes.
So I, I thought that, you know, I have a lot of contacts over there, um, we're hoping to do there in turn if you work, as well as Jaguar and Bullock Company. And so I could definitely get in touch with each other if you're interested.
Wasn't part of that plan, to just bring fiber to all the, all the cities anyway?
Well, there is fiber here.
Yeah, okay.
But then the cost for the, um, for, for us to go, the county's charging a fee where I didn't think they were gonna charge a fee. And the fee is actually more than what we pay Frontier a month for, for, um, internet.
Yeah, but you're comparing, yeah, you're comparing apple to apple.
Yeah, but Jaguar, you should be, I mean, look at Jaguar Communications, is for your phone company. Uh, I know because we got, uh, Jaguar Zion, and no problems whatsoever and a lot, lot cheaper.
And I, and our contract stuff with Frontier in August, we had signed it to you, and so I do have it on my list of stuff to do to contact them to find out. But I had contacted them last year, if you recall, and they weren't any, they were not much cheaper than what the, the, the two-year contract I was able to get with Frontier. Cause I brought that forward, cause Bruce had brought it up, uh, before the budget meetings last year to do it. Do you remember, kinda?
I would, I'm sorry, if I can.
Go ahead.
I would argue that you're not really comparing apples to apples with the service though.
That could be.
So totally understood that, you know, with a, a small office, you probably don't need all the bandwidth and the fiber connection. But if you did go to the direction of, and I talked to you, Jerry, some time ago about Zion and Zion, but, um, had we had this conversation today, we have lots of different options for comparing your phone system over there. But, um, you could integrate all the phone system and voice, um, and everything else that goes along with fiber. They can't really do with, um, the Comcast or, um, some sort of cable connection. So there's a lot of benefits from fiber outside of just the cost.
So you would, you would help us get, help us get Jaguar overlay the city with fiber then, is what you're saying?
Probably the, I'll jump on it tomorrow. I can't promise you, this is, uh, we could promise a compensation, so.
Oh, I love fiber. Okay, I guess that's, that's another discussion. Uh, all I know is the fiber's working great at the Zion, so that's fabulous. Any further, any, any other questions for, is it Paul?
Yes.
Okay. For Paul or any, or any other, the first on the CDW quote is through Matt up at the high school. Um, my, okay, well, I, Matt and I get it on, I, I pick his brain all the time. I keep on a good side of him because I wanna make sure I always have a secure site of information. The city needs to have somebody that's accessible twenty-four seven, or at least during the workday, in case something goes down. That's one thing I, you'll need to keep in mind when you make the decision here.
All right, let me get you again, so.
Yep.
Uh, one thing that, um, we, when we took over the city of North, they were actually using the IP support out of the school at that time. And so there's a conflict in there, because the school value it up for the city. And so, um, we're a team of five people, we're not huge, so there's five hundred companies, we have three, all fintechs, and we're totally available. So I feel like our value add to the city is that, um, we'll, we can have a tech here within a half hour at any time, so, uh, if you don't.
Is it, no, there's a fee for you to come?
There, there is a, sorry, it's a pretty close, but one thing I would say too is that.
I don't think so.
So there's some other technology things that I'd like you guys to think about, and maybe outside of this conversation, such as offsite backup, um, which is relatively cheap. So I brought that up to her, um, we kind of did a quick assessment of what, um, such as like you're really a candidate for ongoing support for work, but for on-call.
Here's one of the things that was in the budget was the replacement of computers, so then we were gonna, after this is done, then I'll buy the course for computers. And then we'll get the computer support too, that he's talking about in the backup, as a whole separate item that I'll bring forward to you.
Okay, have we have any questions, or is there any thoughts, or is there a motion, one way or another?
So what are we making a motion on?
Uh, to go with one of these three.
So pick which one?
Pick which one, either Tech Star or System House or, uh, the CDW, which is through, you know, Matt at the high schools would be.
So there's probably a call you're gonna get here.
Yeah, we'll charge you.
Oh yeah, I mean, I'm.
You're on a contract, but, um, yeah, definitely.
And that's how it is now. We use Dustin and he charges us by the hour, but we don't hardly ever need him. So it's kinda ridiculous to pay a monthly fee. That was why we had the conversation about that, there's a monthly fee we could pay. Well, no, of course it is, but it's ridiculous to the city.
It's a lot, it's a, it's a.
Well, I like that, we can get it in the gym. Because I think that's a good option for different organizations that are here that want to use Wi-Fi. You know, if they have, like, their laptop and they're doing a presentation even, they can connect to Wi-Fi and get the information they need, or whatever, it could provide some more opportunities for wrenching this thing.
One last thing about that, the Wi-Fi, is that should be using a remote controller into our cloud that we have, and so what happens is, let's say that you guys call to go, you know, literally need to reset the password because, you know, you need to change. We can do that really quick, we're not gonna charge you, so that takes us two minutes to do it, but the software is reporting back to us in our office all the time, so we're gonna probably know when it goes down before you do it. So, I'll provide that support in the backend, like quick fixes, we can reboot the router, we can do that, right? We're not gonna worry for that kind of stuff, because you take the on-site network, you can just support, then you actually go to it. So, it's not related to proposals, but we want to.
And even though we have, like, Wi-Fi that would be available to the public, the city stuff is all going to be secure.
We can do two, we can do two, free with, that's what I need, and so we have a public which is gonna be on a totally different subnet, and it can't even talk to the city stuff.
So, that's in this, that's in this number?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just did that for our office. Because they're like, you have, we were giving our visitors, like, we were all using the same Wi-Fi, and they're like that, because they could access our network. So, now we have two.
So, the city computers, then, Wi-Fi and not hardware then?
They could be, but they're currently hard, they would stay hard.
They would stay, the city computers would stay hard.
Yeah, yeah, unless you have a laptop or something. I will tell you that with Ubiquiti, you have a couple of schools that are using it, or one school is using it, and then the city office is using it, we'll have, like, thirty-five to fifty devices on that same device that we're presenting to you, and no problems. So, it's just one of our capacity things.
I can second that, because Ubiquiti that Zion has, and we've got six of those units in the building, and they have run, red, old, fail for the last two years, it just, it just work, so.
I would like.
Plus, we've got thirty, fifty computers under the tie once in a while, so.
I make a motion to go with the Tech Star quote of one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents for that router, routers and whatever else.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second, go with the Tech Star quote, as stipulated. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, how fast can you get in here?
Thank you for coming.
How fast can you get in here?
Helps a lot, I mean, it makes a big difference, being able to talk to somebody.
Well, I appreciate it. Do you have any questions?
All right. My router and all is not working.
Well, we are opening the store in Norwood as well, we're gonna be open to the public. Next one.
Maybe I see Golding's here, too.
I know. All the other cities, I remember, say the same thing.
Thank you.
Never answered, how should I?
Well, I'm sure they'll get it, click, click. Okay, continue, okay, we're at six dot ten, approval of post issuance debt compliance policy.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, this is a continuation of the council review of the city mayor policies attached to the post issuance debt compliance policy, public works on call, protocol policy, and the playground inspection policy. On the question, discussion, recommended changes in the motion approving policy.
On the, on the public works on call policy, is there anything, is there any other policy that says public works, or whoever's on call, has to be within so many minutes of mayor? No. And do we have alternate phone numbers for them? So, that wouldn't need to be in the policy, but, I don't know, I've just been thinking that maybe a response time should be good, or would be good in there. It was there two hours away, and.
Does that, thing that we had to fill out for the insurance, is there a response time required on that information?
Is there sewer backup one?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think there's a one-hour response time. I think we should look at that document and see if there is a response time on that.
Well, do you have the insurance carriers required?
We have an on-call, we have a sewer backup policy, and in that policy, there is all these other policies we had to do. I'm not sure if there is response time or not, but I can look at that and bring this one back to you.
Why don't you do that, check that and come back to us?
No, check on legality for those two, because there's been things about reasonableness and, you know, because way back in the day, they used to say that police officers had to deliver the season, they worked, and then it went all the way to legislature, I think it was Minneapolis Police, where they're gonna start telling us that we can't do that, and I think it's kinda changed to a reasonable response time, but just to make sure that we're in line with them.
They used to say the same thing about city administrators, too, and then that was found to be unconstitutional.
Yeah, so it's.
And when they, also, when they get the cell phone, the on-call phone, are they given a policy on use, the proper use that we have and stuff like that?
They don't actually get the on-call phone. They just, they just get the phone number forwarded to their cell phone.
Oh, they use their cell phone?
They use their own cell phone.
Oh, it's like a forwarding, okay.
Yeah, so we just use call forwarding.
Will carry the on-call phone provided by the city?
Right, but they've just now have been just forwarding the numbers, so.
You carry one phone.
Yeah, and switching the phone, running the phone to Howard Lake and whatever.
So, do, are we keeping it like that, then? Or put some wording in there, or provide a phone that we can forward it to, or whatever?
And if you're requiring them to provide a phone, then we need to pay for them.
Right, right.
You might be careful there.
Well, then, then we're gonna have to get them the on-call phone.
The only, well, the only reason this came up was because we had a public works employee that didn't respond to an alarm, didn't think they had to, and then it went down the phone tree. I mean, the phone tree, it even gets to me if those guys don't answer my phone rings, so then I know. So, it got to the second, it got to Greg Hoover, and Greg had to come in, and Greg was quite a ways away in order to answer the response to the phone, so that's why we developed this policy, so.
So, who, who, I don't know who is who.
Okay. Do you know Greg Hoover? Yeah, Greg, well, so it's Kyle, it's Mike Wagner, and then Tom Yepford, and Tom's a class A wastewater operator from Howard Lake. And so, those, between Kyle, Tom, and Mike, they rotate weekends to be on-call and do plant, for the water and wastewater, and they're compensated fifty dollars a day to do that.
Okay, so they're actually physically going?
They physically have to come, and that's why we put this in here about they have to come to before noon, because we had someone that came in at 6:00 PM at night, found an issue, and then they had to call someone in to fix it, and then you're after hours, and so then, that was why the noon inspections must be completed daily before noon, that's why that's in here, so.
Take the tax deduction for using your phone for work purposes?
Sometimes.
Yeah, so I mean.
I don't think I do, I think.
Okay, I think if you use your phone for work purposes, and talk to your tax provider, I know, but maybe you can take, you know, write some of that off on your taxes.
If you don't have enough, if you don't have enough to deduct, you don't take anything. You don't have enough to write them.
And then on the playground one, is, if there's an issue, would that piece of equipment get tagged somehow? Do we have, like, tags that?
We don't have tags, if it, I don't know, the equipment we have is pretty new, so there's, there's those screws and that sort of thing, but they're not something huge. But I guess if I found an issue, I would mark it off with, you know, yellow caution tape or something like that, and fix it as soon as we can, or just take it out, I mean, just, I mean, as a broken chain.
Right, right.
Take it out for the time being, don't know when to use it.
So, we're just.
But I, yeah, I don't have.
Okay, so, we're bringing the on-call policy back to us. Is there a motion to approve the post issuance debt compliance policy?
I don't know.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, motion made second to approve the post issuance debt compliance policy. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And the playground inspection policy, is there a motion to approve that?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second to approve the playground inspection policy. Any further discussion or questions?
So, on this, we're gonna use the specific inspection forms for the specific parks, correct?
We have them, yes, and I had, I had provided them to the park board because they requested them. I can provide them to you if you'd like to, too, but there's specific forms that come from Earl of Anderson, with the name of each park on them, that public works uses to do their inspection.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're using those and not just checking these specific things.
No, you're using the forms, right? Yep, because Kyle brought them in for me.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, council reports, anybody have anything to report?
Do we, yeah, call.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, sorry about that.
Technicality.
Technicality. Council reports.
I have park board, park board, welcome to new member. We did discuss that bat wing, we discussed policies and procedures, and kind of like the order in how to suggest things to council. We did talk about the Moxie Five K, talked about the volleyball court, and the playground inspections, we talked about the ice rink and the tarp, is it still there?
I pretty much pulled it up.
Just hold it up, yeah.
It was a real tar.
I bet.
With the wind and the water sitting on top, it was not easy, but I was able to get it all Friday.
Did you patch it, then?
Not yet.
Okay.
Needs to dry off, and before you do the next one, we should.
All right, and then we also talked about relocating the living classroom to, over by Lutheran High and that Drew property, so.
Living classroom.
The thing that Chad is doing with the Pheasants Forever, the grant that we have to do a living classroom, and then the science classes can go in there and look at all the bugs.
So, they were gonna do it in Westridge Park, so instead of doing it in Westridge Park, they thought it may be a more appropriate place, would be that Drew property that we bought.
And what, okay, I know they were, are they doing something, because we mentioned to have bought in the other, Gary Lunge at the high school, because he's got some, working together with him, too?
Yeah, Chad has been in contact with him, but separate projects.
Separate projects.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? I've got two quick things to run past, and I'm not sure how much we can get accomplished on, but just to bring them up at least, because one sounds rather intriguing, the other I just need some direction on, I guess, so. Okay, first one is, is, we need this projector, so I could just put it on the screen, but I need to go up there, map up there.
We do have a projector.
Yeah, but I don't have a hotel.
He needs it now.
I need it now.
The Wi-Fi.
Yeah, we need that, too. Well, the one is, okay, first of all, it came, just came up in the discussion Saturday night, and nobody at LHS had thought of it with, is it Sixty-second Street, that's the one that's being, tired now, is that, okay, with that being, now is water being brought down, all the way down to the east?
No.
Oh, it isn't, how far is it being brought down?
It's coming across the road with a hydrant out in front, do you kind of know where it is, Kyle?
Yeah, it's, I don't know how well you can see it on here, currently, we have a hydrant, like, over here.
Yeah.
But right now, the water line comes up right over here, and it crosses over here, and then right now, I think the proposal is just to bring hydrants down to here.
To the other side, so it's on the other side.
Yeah, just so it's closer to the school, but no, this, this isn't being moved. In fact, I talked to Martini about this being moved, but that really wouldn't solve any issues, it's just make, right now, right now, Fieldstone isn't that end, really, because it doesn't circulate back into the system, but it was, I don't know, that's recent, yeah.
The other sixty.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we borrow it down that way, then we can connect it back into the old.
Okay, so where's, where's hydrant coming down from, that the new hydrant's in, coming down from?
I think it'll be right around here somewhere.
No, it's on the other side, it's on the side.
Oh, here?
Yep, it's on the side, yes, it's over there on that side of the, by the high school, on the front.
Because there was no water service, if there was fire or on that.
Right, what's the concern?
Okay, well, no, it's not a concern, what the, the question is, and then I guess I'll bring up both of them. One discussion, this is for an amenity for the city, and I have no idea how fast, if this is feasible, doable, or anything like that, but LHS has got, right about up here, they've got roughly two and a half acres plowed up right now, and they're in the process of putting that into a prairie land restoration project, wildflowers, native grasses, rare grasses, stuff like that, and what they wanna do is they wanna do that, put a little trail down here, down into this lowland, this swamp area, stuff like that, and put some, wood houses, blueberry houses, stuff like that, walking trail for that. Then the discussion came up that right in here would be a nice spot for a community garden, has anyone had any experience with a community garden?
Heard of it. We've talked about it on park board.
Okay, it would be feasible, I think was an idea, would be very amenable to using that land for a community garden, the question was getting water to it, but as long as water's coming down from the northeast down there, it'd be easy enough to tap in a small line as a standpipe, and also, they also want to have some way to get a better irrigation for the soccer fields here, but since there's, I mean, this, is there, does NBC have a problem with, they don't need a big line, all they need is about a three-inch line to get some water to the soccer fields for irrigation or something, does NBC have a problem with having them contact engineers to see if they can get it accomplished there? As long as the water's coming from the north, east there.
They're just tapping in and paying for it, right?
They're gonna pay for it, yeah, they would pay for it.
I don't think there's any, Martini might be able to.
I'll have Joel contact Martini once, or contact Andrew, and do that. And on the, the community gardening thing, think about it, it'd be an interesting amenity for the city, it'd be an interesting amenity for the city, especially with the prairie land, you know, two hundred acres of prairie, because the prairie land, that thing, they wanna put some little trails in, they have, they, I think they got grants for all this money, they've got grants for all this stuff from Pheasants Forever and from the Minnesota Independent School Fund to do this, so it's, it's gonna happen, there'll be great seating this fall, and putting up little benches and stations, people could sit and watch and stuff like that, so it's.
So, they're making it open to the public?
That would be open to the public, yeah, because they would, they put a trail up toward the Fieldstone entrance someplace, a walking path up there, it would.
So, they own all that?
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder if we can combine the grants and make it bigger, you know?
That would be some, it'd be nice to.
Because why would we have one, they're doing the exact same thing we are, they're making a living classroom.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could combine the grants, and then we could combine the work effort and, but that'd be for Chad to.
Why don't they put it on the park board agenda and let me contact him?
Yeah, why don't you contact him and see if they can come together, and, because as we were talking, you know, some of it just sounded like kind of a neat amenity for the city, and I don't think it's gonna be a huge cost for the city involved, because the water some that LHS has put in for the soccer fields anyhow, we just need a standpipe by the gardens there, if people, if you were doing a community garden. I guess Hutch has a big community garden, as does Winston, I guess, and I.
We did talk about it on park board, when there was an empty lot, and we talked about buying it and doing it, but then there was the whole issue of the city getting their hands and all that, and so if Lutheran High is willing to do that and open it up to the public, I think it's awesome.
They've got that little part spot plowed over there, could plant pumpkins this year of all things, which I'm not sure why they did that, but.
So, someone can come and throw them at the new roundabout.
Yeah, so, but, you know, there's enough, and that little corner of land is really not gonna be using anything for LHS, as far as practice, it's just too small to do like that, so it'd be a nice little, so.
Some of the things they may wanna consider when they tap into the water main is, they're gonna obviously extend it out to the soccer fields.
Yeah.
They'll have to have irrigation backfill preventers and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm sure that, yeah, that they'd have to.
Gotta be done right, don't you think?
Yeah.
Run through the engineers and.
As, as you look at that. As, as you look at that, you have to also look at the garden needing the same type of facility. Because the herbicides and pesticides that can be used with water.
Right.
And watering, um, I know when, the experience I've had with other ones, that there was a little bit of issue with the metering of the water, and who was paying for the water. Water gets left on at the gardens and.
Yeah, and those, I know those, they all, we all, we talked about all that stuff too, it'll have to all be resolved somehow, all be figured out, how it's handled, maybe it's on a timer that's not only available certain hours of day or something, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
How that would work, but, um, I guess now it's a matter of, just going forward, and as long as we, the water's coming down on that side, it does, I want to avoid us coming next year digging up Sixty Second Street, digging into the tarp, but that won't happen anyhow, because it's on the, coming down on the, the other side there, so, that would make that problem.
I think they're getting ready to, or digging for that water main, so.
Where's the sewer? So we're in the same location?
We're.
Kind of?
Kind of, yeah, it's throughout the over, the same, or, yeah, across the road in the same area, but, uh.
I don't know, hopefully the high school talked to somebody, because I think they actually need sewer also.
Well, because right now it all goes out to the south, doesn't it?
Yeah, because I think the architect, that was something that was brought up, that one of the meetings, architects actually brought up, that if they go ahead with this new addition, that they need sewer as well. Like I said, well, somebody better start talking to somebody, because it needs to be done now, it's a change order then, for that, you know, and Lutheran High would have to pay for it, but. Or a pipe could just be put under Sixty Second, the pipe that needs to be, could be put under Sixty Second Street, so then it doesn't have to be dug up.
Right.
And they don't have to connect yet.
You'd have to have the elevations, you'd have to have the connecting elevation.
And all the engineers.
I will, I'll talk to Joel tomorrow about this water thing, and then, about the sewer too.
Let me get ahold of Hutchinson and Winston and find out what they've done for community garden.
Yeah, I did, Ken.
Yep.
Uh, I did call them, they, but nobody called me back, and I didn't, didn't have time to call Winston, so I just called Hutch, but nobody got back to me, so, but if you could follow up and see what they say, uh, be fine. Okay, anything else?
Are people gonna be coming into this roundabout at forty miles an hour?
No.
That's what the speed limit sign says.
Well, it's forty, but, but they, they slow down to like fifteen, twenty, like one-on-seven does.
So they just don't have that sign on this map?
No, no, I'm, I'm sure they, uh.
Yeah, it's been like forty miles an hour, man.
Well, they won't go, they won't go forty through there.
Someone else.
Well, seven doesn't have, it doesn't like slow you down to get to the roundabout, you just slow down.
It's, it used to say twenty, I think they all said like twenty miles an hour.
Thought they did say twenty.
Well, I just on the big, like, there's a roundabout coming, recommended speed. I don't, I don't remember, I used to drive past.
When I look at this, I'm like, gosh, can, are we, they gonna be able to go forty miles an hour?
I'm assuming we're gonna have a sign up that says roundabout ahead.
Oh, yeah.
That's not on here either?
But it's probably further back.
I don't understand why it's posted on the south end at forty, I can see it coming in from the north, but not forty going out. Where does the forty, the speed limit town change?
Right about there.
Right about there, changing to thirty.
No coming in, but not going out.
Coming in, but going out. It don't change to fifty-five until you get out to here, does it?
Yeah, it changes to forty up.
Up by the fire station?
No, no.
No.
It changes to forty up by Bowser Parish someplace.
Yeah.
No, fifty-five is Bob's.
They got forty down here.
I don't think there's a forty going out, there's a forty coming in, but not a going out.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so either, but maybe I don't pay attention.
No, because I think I always like, oh, I can go fifty-five here, and I'm by Bob's. When I come in, it's forty, I don't know, we should all drive this.
Do every day.
I know, but I don't.
I don't know that the south is signed right now, the north side of it is, but, because it's just a straight shot, no.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they got forty there, because that's not gonna be.
That's what I'm thinking too, that's what I was looking at going, uh, yeah.
Uh, that's right.
Well, they got forty here too, though.
Yeah.
So maybe there's another sign.
Must be another sign in someplace.
All right.
Okay, any other que, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Motion made, second, to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.